Good evening. Invite you to join us to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Roll call.
Colpak, here. Pepcorn?
Here.
Strand?
Here.
Turnberg, here. Mahoney?
Here. We have an executive meeting that we had, and we have a motion from that meeting. Commissioner Pepcorn?
I'll make a motion. I move to authorize the city administrator to convey the counteroffers to WMF Properties LLC and to Hazer Ventures LLC as discussed in today's executive session, and to develop with said parties the terms of purchase agreements between those parties and the city, and to then be presented to the city commission for approval, and to authorize the listing of the northerly portion of the landfill property of approximately 24 acres for public sale utilizing non-exclusive listing agreements as were used for the sale of the parcels to Galvanizers, WMF, and Hazer, and to offer a listing price of $3.85 per square foot for said northerly portion.
Sarah, second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Kind of wonder why the diocese is a little different tonight. We have mayor-for-the-day introduction that went on, and I have two winners that are sitting with me. We went to the Fargo Public Schools, which many of you are here today, thank you, your leadership, and asked the students a question. What would you do if you were mayor for the day? With us tonight are the winners. We have Ninja Batalt, a third grader at Bennett Elementary, and we have Evelyn Anderson, a third grader at Eagles Elementary. Both students wrote outstanding essays that were judged based on originality, content, grammar, and structure. I want to give congratulations to both of them and their families who are with us tonight. We're going to have Ninja read her essay first, followed by Evelyn, and she's going to do it just like commissioners do. They're going to see it on the screen in front of them and get to read it to us. So Ninja, are you ready? And I asked you earlier today, what's the greatest city in the world?
Fargo.
She did it earlier, too. That's real quiet, but she said Fargo, I'm pretty sure, very loud. So here we go. Are you ready?
This is what I would do if I were mayor. First, what I think is great about Fargo is that there are police officers and firefighters to protect us. I also think having schools to learn at, parks, and homes are great for Fargo. What I think is special about Fargo is that our safe and kind community is what represents Fargo. Another thing that's special about Fargo is that everyone here is unique and special in their own way. Now, what I would do as mayor is stop selling cigarettes, tobacco, and stuff like that. I would also build more parks to walk in and plant lots of trees for fresh air. Some more things I would do is make sure the water is safe and clean, also any animals. I would also make sure the schools teach the kids what they need, including math, literacy, science, art, history, and that kind of stuff. Another thing that I would do is make sure Fargo is clean and safe for everyone living here. I would make sure Fargo is getting the healthy and good resources we all need. Also, I would appreciate the help of all people helping environment. I will make more homeless shelters for those in need. Plus, I would help Fargo grow strong and healthy. I would make sure everyone has equal rights. Lastly, I will make sure Fargo is enjoyable and awesome. That is what I would do if I were mayor for a day.
Evelyn, are you ready?
Yeah. I think Fargo is great because there are so many things to do, like going to the park, zoo, skate city, and the beach. There are so many fun things to do in Fargo. That is why I think Fargo is great. I think Fargo is special because there are things to do, and these are some of the things that I think make Fargo special. The water park, dance shows, tennis, and way more. That is why I think Fargo is special. If I were mayor, I want to make nursing homes free because it would be hard to make money when you're old. I would also lower taxes because almost every year they get higher. Those are just two things I would do if I were mayor.
Well, Rupak Gandhi and your staff did an excellent job. These are third graders and fifth graders, don't you think? They gave us great ideas. We'll have to work on a couple of those. Everybody keeps bringing up taxes, so I'll have to be careful about that, Evelyn. So, Em, do they get to come down to their parents' house? Is that what happens? Is that what I do? Oh, I'm sorry. I also have plaques for everybody, which they get to take to their schools to show off that they were mayor for the day. I did have to turn down one essay, which said the mayor was the greatest mayor in the world, but okay.
Did you write it, Mayor?
Till we walked out and picture. Very good. Let's stand up, grab your plaques.
Nice job.
I also promised you coin. You've got a mayor's coin. Here we go. And we'll go down in front. They want to take pictures.
Thank you. All of us? Oh, all of us.
Oh, my. Commissioner. Tonight, we continue our effort to recognize and highlight the incredible work our city departments do every day to serve our residents. Our teams work tirelessly to keeping operations running smoothly 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and 365 days a year. As part of each commission meeting, we'll take time to beginning the spotlight one of our departments and honor their dedication, hard work, and outstanding customer service. These teams are the backbone to local government, and it's important to reorganize, recognize the people who make that all happen. We're also looking forward to sharing these stories with our community, demonstrating our commitment going above and beyond our residents. Tonight, we're highlighting the city Fargo Public Works Department. This team is responsible for delivering a wide range of high-level services in our community regardless of the season. Throughout the year, Public Works crew are busy keeping Fargo safe, clean, and functional. They sweep streets, plow roads, patch potholes, plant trees, pick up litter, unclog sewers, repair city vehicles, flush fire hydrants, and the list goes on. Their work is essential to maintaining the quality of life we enjoy in Fargo. Now, it's amazing to meet Ben. You have people doing potholes right now with our quick patch right away, in fact, around the city. Was that on purpose? But they're right around City Hall today. We see that, and at the same time, Ben has to get ready for a snowstorm later in the week. So he's got crews taking potholes, and then next week we'll be plowing snow. So we'll now show a video that underscores exceptional work of our Public Works Department.
So Public Works has a pretty widespread umbrella. We're made up of five divisions, which is your streets, your central garage, your mains and hydrants, forestry, and vector control. As winter wraps up, we're trying to get out and prepare for our summer activities, but spring really has to do with our street sweeping. We try and get it cleaned up out there because we have a lot of people that ride motorcycles, so we do that. Plus, the appearance, cleaning up the garbage in the storm retention ponds, along the fences, along the outside of the interstate ditches. Anything we maintain, that's a big thing for us, is we want to make a push in the spring, get everything cleaned up, polish everything, and make it look good for our community. Even though we have multiple divisions within Public Works, we're one team. So when we see weather events like snow come in, we band together as one team, and you'll see our forestry division folks, they're running our sanders out there. Our mains and hydrants team, they're running our snow plows in the alleys and doing all the alleys. We have our own sidewalk division that's doing sidewalks, and then our street team is focusing on trying to keep the streets clean. We do the same thing when it comes to a wind event, and when we have large wind events and a lot of trees are lost, we kind of take all our folks from our street department, our mains, and transfer them over to our forestry division so that we can serve the city while still saving us money by not adding a lot of employees.
So there's probably two jobs that we do that are a huge part of keeping the city going, and one of those being the stormless stations that we have around town. We have 85 of those, and those need to be monitored closely and serviced on a daily basis to keep them up and running. The other one is the sanitary system. We have over 420 miles of sanitary lines in the ground in the city of Fargo. We actually cleaned over a million feet of sewer lines last year. City of Fargo is growing at a fast rate, a lot of construction going on. One of the numbers that actually surprised me is we hauled over 4,300 tons of brie off the streets last year. That comes out to 8.6 million pounds of dirt, gravel, any sort of trash that you might find on the streets. As far as jumping in other equipment and helping out other departments, forestry, water department, we're Team Fargo. I mean, we'll do anything we can to help each other out.
You're touching everything that you're seeing driving around almost that's above the ground and below the ground, and so you can find interest in almost anything here, whether it's operating equipment, or it's how the infrastructure works, how our water infrastructure works. And we spend a lot of time educating, and one thing we do at Public Works is we'll give you whatever you want to exceed, and people kind of like that, that we try and promote within and like to educate our people. I think the biggest thing with Public Works is we really believe we're in the customer service business, and we take a lot of pride in that. Our team works hard to try and make residents happy. We may not be able to do everything they want, but we try and find a middle ground with every resident we touch.
Tonight, we will bestow the Fargo Rising Star Award to a recipient chosen by the leadership of the Public Works Department. This award goes to Alyssa Geller. Alyssa has worked for the Public Works Department for about two years as Office Associate III. She performs many duties that are essential for delivering key programs and services to the community. Alyssa answers high-volume phone calls for all divisions of Public Works and provides residents with assistance and information to the department's activity, services, rules, and regulations. She takes calls from emergency dispatchers and ensures that requests are made to the appropriate crew or supervisor. Alyssa manages utility locate requests, ensures that utilities are properly marked before excavation work begins. She maintains employee records, conducts orientations for new hires, and schedules interviews. During snow removal operation, Alyssa addresses property owners' concerns and coordinates inspections to resolve issues. Alyssa is a dedicated professional with strong work ethic. Her willingness to help others and her positive can-do attitude make her a valuable team member. Alyssa always goes the extra mile to resolve issues for coworkers and citizens alike. Congratulations, Alyssa. Your commitment to service and your outstanding efforts truly make you a Fargo Rising Star. Is there a motion to approve the order of agenda? Continuing items 34 to 515 on Monday, April 14, and continuing items 37 to 515 on Monday, April 28.
So moved.
Sarah, second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the March 17 regular meeting?
Aye, so moved.
Sarah, second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the consent item 1 through 32?
So moved.
Sarah, second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
For my two young mayors, if you want to leave now, that's fine. You and your families can go. Thank you for your patience. You've been about 3:30, so it kind of makes it good. I very much thank for your children to be part of this, and we appreciate your efforts. So, and I'm glad they think Fargo's great, so. You're welcome. Wrangler Jenna, recommendations for appointing to the Board of Health. Do you have any recommendations? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Strand?
Mayor, I think it's just worth noting, we had a really great number of applicants for the Board of Health. We ended up interviewing four candidates for these three positions. I think it was approaching 20 applicants. So really great support out in the community, and thanks to everybody for being willing to serve in that capacity, and for those who are stepping up.
And you had some great candidates, John, that really want to be part of that Board of Health as well. Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
So I've got to make sure which items I've got. Row to 34. So we've got item 35, application for a Class F alcoholic beverage license for Soul Avenue Kitchen, doing business at Nova Eating and Supper Club, to be located at Fort O2 Broadway North. Steve Sprague to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So this is the location where Burn Bombs was, and we had an operator in town that has a number of other restaurants that saw the opportunity and said, this is a great location for us, and so they wanted to apply for the liquor license. The Class F is a food, a liquor license where the food sales must exceed the alcohol sales. They're not allowed to have a bar, a physical bar, so the alcohol would be mixed poured in a room that's located separately from the area where it's consumed. And we've gone through the background check, and everything looked good there, and so it does come to you with a recommendation of approval from the Liquor Control Board.
Sir, one president wishes to speak to this alcoholic beverage license. Anybody wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Aye, so moved.
Sarah, second.
Second.
Any discussion? Sounds like a great way to fill that restaurant, huh?
They're excited to get open.
And when are they opening?
Soon.
Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Application for a license ABH Limited, alcoholic beverage license for TC Lodging, doing businesses at Spring Hill Suites, to be located at 3401 Jax Way South. Steve Sprague to explain.
This is down next to the golf, the outdoor golf area, and the new bowling center down south Fargo. It is a new hotel license. The ABH Limited allows them to have what we call a manager special, where they'll have hors d'oeuvres, and maybe you get a free drink or something like that. It also allows them to have off-sale to the hotel guests in the sundry shop, and we've gone through the background checks with this one. Does come to you with a recommendation of approval from the Liquor Control Board.
Sir, anyone president wishes to speak to this liquor license? Anybody wishing to speak? We have closed public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Aye, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you, Steve. Item 38, recommendation for Commissioner Strand to make city-owned property available, possible convention center location with RFP process. Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we're going into an exciting time. People for many years have been hoping to get, establish a convention center here in town, and this was voted on, and the people have decided this will happen. So we're arch, as I understand, the city commission's role. Ultimately, in the end, we will pass and decide what proposals will prevail, where the convention center will be, and all the terms, and so on like that. And that's unfolding now, and there's a lot of people involved at the table, researching convention centers and studying it, and some of our commissioners are participating in that process as well. So here's what I know. When I go to other cities, and I've had many decades of going to conventions, I like to walk out the door and have an experience. I like to go to a city where it's a destination you're excited about going to. I like to go and have an opportunity in a moment to see who they are and what they offer. And yes, we have proposals coming forward, of course, that will have developers that already have some site locations, some lands. We have proposals, I'm expecting, that they may have a hotel or access to hotels now, and yet I'm guessing there are other developers that would love to be in the mix or have a chance at this that don't have those assets available to allow them to go forward. And I don't know where the recommendations will go, and I don't know where this commission will go. What I would like to do, though, is add to that mix for proposals to go forward, is to offer to any developers available city-owned property downtown, should that be a good decision, option for them. So we have at least a few locations. We have the Mid-America Steel location, which is just a pristine location. It's maybe the best in the state. And then we have right here next to us, the Civic Center, the Health Department, the police station, which is being used for the Downtown Engagement Center now. I don't know if any of these will even resonate with any proposers or developers. I don't know if they'll even see this as viable or an opportunity that they would like to explore and vet. However, in my thinking, if the city could offer and make available some downtown properties to allow this downtown, the downtown to be a potential home for a convention center, that's my recommendation. And I believe Jim Gilmore will be addressing some of the details of the properties that we've asked about.
This is what the city owns with the Mid-America Steel site. You know, this, it's a large site, but it's probably limited in terms of what can be developed. I mean, this, between the tracks and Main Avenue, it's really not very accessible, and then you get east of about this line here into the flood plain, but there is, you know, probably about a four-acre area, again, where we've got some restrictions now on what can be built there. Not impossible, and you can see from your photo, when the building's removed, most of the foundations still remain, and so it'd be a cost to clean that up, as well as to provide some flood protection. The Civic Center site, you know, we've got, obviously, the Civic Auditorium here. You know, if you go out to about the Ten Commandments, there's probably 85,000 square feet here, and of course, Engagement Center now and the vacant Public Health Building are there. So I'm not sure of any other sites downtown, but just some, you know, details on this. I don't have a lot of information, but the basic question is, do you want to even make this available for developers, should they be interested? And Commissioner Strand had this motion.
Mayor, I advance the motion that's presented.
Okay. You have a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Mr. Chair, can I make a comment?
Mr. Colpak.
Thank you, and Commissioner Strand. I'm certainly not opposed to this concept, of course, if we can help a developer who comes forward. My question is, is this necessary when in the end any developer proposal will be coming before the convention committee for final approval with the terms and conditions that's part of that property? So I'm just a little confused, and I want to make sure there's no unintended consequences if we do move forward with this kind of prior approval we're asking for, and so if it's not out of order... I was talking to Charlie Johnson, CVB Executive Director, ahead of the meeting, and I think he has a couple of questions or comments, if that's okay.
Is it okay with the commissioner and Charlie speak? Is that okay? And Mr. Colpak and Commissioner Pepcorn, I want you to think a little bit about, you just took tours of St. Cloud in Rochester, and from your assessment, is there some ideas, maybe in spatial, that we need for this? I think you both looked at those, so just think about that before, when Charlie gets done.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner Strand, thank you for this suggestion. I don't really see any problem with this. I want to make that clear right away. In fact, I sort of feel like they are available already. I think if any developer came to the city and wanted to talk about them, I don't know exactly how the city works that way, but I feel like if someone had a sincere proposal, they'd be able to do it. My only concern is that however you couch this, we make sure everyone understands this remains an open process, and that we are expecting to get quite a few proposals, and I think it'd be great if we got something for one or both of these proposals. That'd be wonderful, but they're going to be weighed against each other, and we are going to get proposals for other parts of town. And I just want to make sure everyone understands the process remains open, and if you make it clear that these are available for development, that's perfectly fine. They will get weighed against everything else, and I think all the commissioners who are on the committee with me and the other members of the committee feel that way. So I just want to make sure that's clear, that the process remains open. We haven't even sent out the RFP yet, and we still have a few things to do, but hopefully we'll be getting that out pretty soon.
Commissioner Pepcorn?
So, Mr. Chair, well, first of all, I want to thank Charlie, because we had, I think, 12 people on the tour, and it was excellent. You went to St. Cloud as well, and to see them in person was a great thing. So thank you first for having us all go, and I think it was cool, because there's 12 different people, and we all have our own perspective, so we learned a lot. But I will say, this has to be open to every, and this almost implies that it isn't, and I don't like that message that we're sending. And the one thing we learned from the sites that we saw were, you can't be landlocked, and we need lots of space, because what we saw is, we're probably going to have additions in the future because we can't afford to do everything right now. And so to me, that eliminates several of these sites, because they're landlocked, and there's no room for expansion. No matter how wonderful they are, there's no room for expansion. And the only other comment I would make is, I do agree with Commissioner Strand, the Mid-America Steel site is fantastic, but we have to get the diversion finished first, so that's in 2027. But then, it also has to be, we have to do everything to get it, and that's 2030. So until then, I don't think we should consider developing that site, because once that's all completed, the value of that property is going to be much more than it is now. And so that's my only word of caution, and I do think the Mid-America Steel site, that is going to be the cherry on top. I think something that goes in there will be something that will set the tone for a long time. Sorry for going on. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Colpak, you went on those tours. Did you learn anything as well?
Yeah, it was incredibly, it was, first of all, extremely well organized from beginning to end, and it was a good use of two days. I think the takeaway for me is that when you've seen one convention center in a community, you've seen one convention center in a community that works for them. And so it's going to be important for the city of Fargo to really foothold in on what is it we are looking for, what can we afford, and what can we sustain. But having said that, there was a lot of best practices and lessons learned from both, and they were very forthcoming, and it was just great to get to know the committee as well, so thank you.
All the organization was my coworker, Mallory Ackerman, so give her the credit for that.
She did a great job.
Yeah.
Tom Knacklitz is here tonight, or Nathan, you're here. So engineering, can you suck to the podium? Nathan, we are going to do Mid-America Steel. We still have to do some studies on it. John, just to acknowledge, environmental cleanup is going to cost a fair amount in that area, but the engineering team is looking at what is the future of Mid-America Steel. Commissioner Pepcorn, we probably won't wait till 30. We're trying to figure it out now, you know, what do we have to do? With the change of administration, there were some environmental grants we sometimes could get to cover the costs of cleaning it up. I'm not sure that'll happen now with all the federal cuts that are out there, but I do think we want to have a plan for the Nathan, we are going to do Mid-America Steel. We still have to do some studies on it. John, just to acknowledge, the environmental cleanup is going to cost a fair amount in that area, but the engineering team is looking at what is the future of Mid-America Steel. Commissioner Pepcorn, we probably won't wait till thirty. We're trying to figure it out now, you know, what do we have to do? With the change of administration, there were some environmental grants we sometimes could get to cover the cost of cleaning it up. I'm not sure that'll happen now with all the federal cuts that are out there, but I do think we want to have a plan for the commission to say, here's what we're thinking about. We might have to bring a consultant in and look at it and see what we need to do. But Nathan, are you aware, or do we have to wait for Tom?
Yeah, no. Engineering is in the process, worked with planning here a little bit, selected a consultant recently to help us assist on identifying what cleanup needs to continue occur on the Mid-America site, some of the costs of those, as well as some potential grant opportunities for us out there. So we're just in the starting process of that, but hopefully, over the course of this next year, we'll be in front of you.
And then on the flood protection side, do we have to do some more work, perhaps a dike on that location as well?
Yes, yep. So we do need to do some additional flood mitigation work there for safely passing that five-hundred-year level through the community with diversion in place. So it's adequately elevated for the hundred-year, the thirty-seven-feet flow through town, but on the five-hundred-year, we want to make sure that any redevelopment there is protected for that type of flood, too.
And could we work with the river keepers or anybody for that land that we can't develop? Could we kind of make that into a garden, or some people talk about a sculpture garden? Or is there something we can do with the land that would be outside the dike?
Those are all opportunities that, within that floodway area, those type of uses would be permanent use within the floodway.
And perhaps we could do that before two thousand thirty. Commissioner Pepcorn.
So Nathan, can I ask, so the, obviously, the, when the diversion is done, but it also has to be certified, and so do you think, is there a possibility then we would have more square footage to develop, and maybe have to use less fill if that happens? Can you talk a little bit about that, the certification?
Well, so the area that really is governed heavily on that property today, or is encumbering that property quite a bit, is the floodway that's designated by FEMA. That area will change slightly with the diversion, but not significantly, so that will still be the driving factor of what can be developed and what cannot be developed on that property.
Nathan, can you go to the slides Jimmy has up there and just point out where it would stop?
I don't recall exactly off the top of my head, but I think it's right around this area is kind of where that FEMA floodway line is.
So all that rest of the land we can't use, so.
Yeah, and that land is quite a bit lower than the land to the west.
So, Mr. Chair, can I just jump in real quick? So, but that doesn't mean that is unusable land. Let's, you could use that for parking. Let's say that it was a sporting goods, had their corporate headquarters there, they could have access to the river to try some of their stuff, or, I mean, there's, there's things that we can't even think about, the potential there. Just because you can't build a building there doesn't mean there can't be something there for a business or something. So there's lots of potential there, and I do think that is, that is the entryway to our downtown and very symbolic, and so the potential is very exciting. It's kind of quirky with the railroad tracks and all that, but I think there's lots of things, but I do think we need to wait until we get all these other things finished before we, before we try to develop. But that's just my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And we know Bruholz right next to railroad tracks, they're doing fine. Commissioner Strand.
Thank you. I'm not sure if I've been clear. I'm not, my expectation isn't that this is where the convention center will be. It's that this will provide another option for developers to consider when they're looking at proposals, compared to other options they are already looking at. That's all this is. And I have an immense faith in our developers and our visionaries in the community. They may surprise us with something that go, wow, this really gets our attention, or they may not even propose anything. But it would, in my head, it would be a misstep, or a missed opportunity, to not give them a chance to have a location to buy or develop, or partner with the city to consider downtown as a location for our convention center. That's all this is. You know, we don't know, we don't know what they will propose, or if anybody will propose it.
So, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Pepcorn.
But I think this implies, this, these are all included. Everything in Fargo is included. I don't want, that's, that's the thing, John, or Commissioner Strand, this, this goes without saying. We are going to get, Charlie, we have, we're going to have a lot of offers, and some of them are going to be totally surprising to us, and so that's, it's wide open. And so that's, that's what I predict is going to happen, so. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I'll continue. I don't think there's a developer in town who realizes or believes that this is available until we offer it to be available. We can't assume that. But so unless we say, we give you the green light to explore these in your considerations, they won't. So we're shutting the door before we open the door, if that's the case. And all I know is if this ended up, that downtown was the best location, the best possible proposal, the best delivery of a facility, I'm all for hearing what they would offer.
Jim Gilmore, can I call you back up, please? So the developers, in a sense, have known that there is availability of what they can do, but RFQ, Jim, is that going to limit them in any way if they wanted to consider the site?
Maybe I can ask Nancy, in terms of how state law reads, I mean, I suppose a developer could come to you and say, I want to develop, you know, one of your parking lots into a development, then you would have to respond to that, but I think they would probably want to know an initial approval before they sat down and did a lot of drawings and that, so they could certainly come to you before the RFPs were due.
But the other, the other thing is that you, on the Mid-America Steel site, many of our developers in town, you've already walked them through that site. The people that might think about doing this development, I think that in the past, we have shown them in America, and nobody's come forth with a plan.
Yeah, one of the major limiting factors is you have a river setback ordinance that really limits the relatively small triangle here, so there'd have to be an ordinance change. It's certainly not impossible, but yeah, most of them, I think, walked away, you know, not enthused, because in somewhat, the value of properties downtown, there's so much for sale right now that people aren't looking to build what they might be interested in the past in terms of housing, hotels, office. There's sort of an abundance of all of that right now.
Anything else, John? Okay. Any other discussion?
We don't have a second.
Number thirty-nine, legislative update. Mike?
Oh, excuse me, are you, are you going to call for a second? Could we at least do that?
I did call twice for a second, and you didn't get one.
Good.
It says Mike, I don't know who else it is.
Mayor and Commissioners, I'd be happy to provide a brief report. Commissioner Strand, I believe, did you add this item to the agenda? I can speak very briefly to this topic. We have a property tax relief and reform that's still being discussed within the legislative body. There's a new email just this afternoon from the League of Cities as it relates to the property tax next path that will run through the Senate Appropriations Committee. There is a bit of a difference that the Senate has made to its version of the property tax relief and reform bill that, if approved by the full Senate, will have to go back to the House and will go to a conference committee, so we'll learn more about that. And then I would just also make one other note, and that is that we had a really positive bit of news on the transit front, our paratransit bill, two million dollars statewide for those communities that are providing paratransit services, and that will be subject to some additional modification, is the communities that have paratransit services come together on a formula to distribute those funds. That's the first time that the state will have provided these funds to this level in North Dakota, so we're very excited about that. And then I guess the last comment I could make tonight is that we're still awaiting final action as well on a House Bill twelve ninety-seven, that is the approval voting ban, that would be in front of the full Senate shortly. We don't know exactly when that timing will be, but that is another matter that is still pending before the legislature. A variety of other matters continue at the legislature, but I'll just leave it at that. Happy to answer any of the questions off the top of my head if.
Any questions? Mike? Commissioner Strand.
Thank you, Michael. I'm just curious if, at the Legislative Assembly, how much focus there is or isn't on, because everywhere we look, we're hearing about impacts and results of the federal actions taking place in DC. People losing funding, people's funding's being cut in edu, I mean, it's everywhere. Are they, is this surfacing there, or is it on our radar, or how is that all going to end up being resolved going forward? I'm just, I'm just at a loss.
That's a great question, Commissioner Strand, thanks for that. At the North Dakota League of Cities level, there's not a lot of discussion yet. I would say that we're learning in real time what the impacts of those federal reductions will look like, especially in health and human services and local grants. Those grants that are provided by the North Dakota Department of Health that then are allocated in a block grant style to the local communities, such as Fargo-Cast Public Health, we're still learning more about what that's going to mean, so we don't have definitive statements yet. But if the Commission would desire some additional information on that, we could certainly come back on that. But I would say, too, on some of the other issues with education, we obviously wouldn't be as connected to education and what those cuts might look like when the federal government is removing some of those funds from the state Departments of Education, so we'll learn more about that. But I would say, most of our primary focus has been on the voting, elections, property tax relief, and some economic development and transit matters.
Thank you.
And I'd say, John, Health Department has been hit by it, so you may talk to John about it. She got hit pretty hard with some of the federal granting being held back or whatever. That'll be a difficulty, and we'll have to look into that, but you're right that we have to watch that. And I think from Mike and I's point of view, the state is a little bit concerned about some of the federal funding pullbacks, that it's not fully, that we understand all the effects of that, so that'll be sorted out hopefully in the next thirty to sixty days, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pepcorn, liaison updates?
Update.
Mr. Turnberg?
No update.
Come on, tell me about the libraries, going crazy.
I'm actually, I got a long list of things from our library director, Tim Dirks, and I will be putting them on my Facebook page, so it's too long to keep people.
Oh, my goodness.
They do a lot.
Civic Center got two proposals, just so you are aware, and we have two people that put in, there are two, two different groups that put in proposals for it, and that will have to be sorted and brought back to you to have a look at. Well, I'm going to Bismarck later this week, talk to the governor about the moving the Engagement Center to the Service Center. There's five million dollars that's tucked into a bill that we're hoping to get a part of to help cover those costs. We're also talking about Red River Valley Water Supply. It went into the Senate with a cost of two sixty. We'd asked for two twenty-one. We were very excited when it went to two sixty. They saw the revenue report, and now it's been dropped to one sixty, so it's a considerable drop from two twenty-one. So we will be talking about that, because there's a little disconnect between the House and the Senate about how much money might be available, but I think it's something that we need to visit about and try to move forward. Commissioner Colpak, who did talk about approval voting, we think Senator Judy Lee did a nice job in the sense of saying, who I was, Ben Koplman's only interested in Fargo elections, and, you know, are we stepping over our bounds to try to do something to Fargo? It's obviously that he's trying to confuse rank choice versus approval voting. Even the Secretary of State seemed confused about that, because rank choice is something that bothers people, but we tried to explain that elections around the state are a little